I'd like to call the meeting to order. We can stand and say the prayers. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which we serve, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you everyone for coming. We have no written communication. I guess we have no written... No with signed in wishing to speak. We do have a special committee report with alternative funding.
Yes, we had a lot of other funding due. We want to discuss the Stripes event. We're still exploring venues because our top choice venue is booked for the date that we picked. So we're looking at alternatives and we also were looking at some book grant requests for the money from last year's Stripes event. So BORTCOM will have another meeting in a few weeks and there'll be more activity and action then.
Okay. Do we have any other committees? Me? No. All right. I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. This is somewhat of a mixed emotion night. We are here to honor our retirees for their dedicated service to our school district, but to say it bluntly, we really don't want to let you go. So it's a tough thing for us because it's a loss of all your expertise and your dedication to our district, but it's certainly something that I know you look forward to and we're excited for you. So I'd like to welcome Mr. Lewis to the podium with me so we can honor our Smallwood retirees.
Okay, thank you. Should I come?
Hi.
Okay. Pat DiGiacomo, come on up please. Great. I'm thrilled to have this opportunity to celebrate an exceptional educator who spent such an integral part of the Smallwood community as well as Amherst Central School District, Mrs. Pat DiGiacomo. Pat has been a teacher for a total of 32 years, first beginning her career in the Iroquois District, spending six years as a resource room teacher. After that, Pat spent the next 10 years raising three highly successful children. And when she was ready to return to the classroom in 1992, Pat was hired as a part-time reading teacher at Windermere. In the following year, she was hired into a probationary position as a first grade teacher at Smallwood Drive School. And from there, she taught our first and second grade loop and has excelled as our enrichment teacher for the past four years. As I reflect on the nine years that Pat and I have worked together, I've seen firsthand how her selfless love of others has not only benefited students and their families, but each of us at our school as well. She has tirelessly put forth great effort and has given so much of herself to support all types of children in whichever ways they need to allow for their maximum growth, knowing that children learn in different ways and at different rates. I can think of one boy in particular in one of her last few years as a classroom teacher who could have tested the patience of some other educator in some other district somewhere, but not her. Pat was determined to reach him and make a difference, and she certainly did. This boy started to blossom because of her patience and for appreciating and loving him for who he was. This is just one example, knowing that there are so many other countless lives that have been tremendously impacted by her for over those 32 years. So further, the partnerships that Pat has forged with families and the high level of caring, commitment, and compassion they received from her have touched them in special ways as well. I know that parents greatly appreciated her open and honest communication, sometimes determined communication, because they knew that she cared deeply about their child and wanted nothing but their ultimate success. I also know of parents who may have been nervous or anxious or overwhelmed, and it was her presence and support that have helped encourage them to feel empowered and part of a team. I also think of the myriad of opportunities that Pat has provided for students in her newest role as enrichment teacher. Whether it's thinking skills for our second graders, STEAM Mondays for all of our students' community time, or even organizing a fundraiser, she has helped nourish our community by challenging our students to be problem solvers and creative thinkers, and even more importantly, to think of others before they think of themselves. As a result, several thousands of dollars has recently been raised for pediatric cancer and for Children's Hospital, just to share a few examples. Again, her influence and her reach is far greater than the walls of any one classroom or any one school building. Most of you probably don't know that there's a very affectionate nickname given to Pat by those very closest to her in our building. Yes, it's Sister Pat. And that refers to who she is as a person, but it also represents the way that she chooses to live her life by being kind and respectful and loving to all whom she encounters. There's also a secular meaning of the word sister, one who is a family member. Not only has Pat been a sister to many of us at Smallwood Drive, she's also been a mother to some, sharing her unique wisdom born of her professional and life experiences. I know that personally, there have been key times when I have sought her wise counsel, knowing that I could trust in her expertise and her keen ability to see the bigger picture. In conclusion, I couldn't be happier for Mrs. DiGiacomo. This next chapter of her life will allow her to spend more time with her family whom she loves so much. I also know that she will continue to spread that special part of herself in new and different ways. So Pat, congratulations on your retirement and thank you for being so special and for influencing the children, families, and our Amherst community in such deep and profound ways. We are all better because of you. Congratulations.
Wow.
And Sue Plant, please come on up. Come on over.
I'm honored to be able to have this opportunity to recognize Mrs. Sue Plant, who's retiring as a teaching assistant from Smallwood Drive School. Sue began her career in the Amherst District 23 years ago, working with Nancy Keller Bruce in the PPS office as a transcriptionist. After spending a year typing out IEPs and site reports that were dictated at the time, Nancy suggested to Sue that she might really enjoy working in a school directly with children. Sue was excited about this opportunity and began at Smallwood as a special education teaching assistant, and then she spent the last five years working as a personal aide. When I recently sat down with Sue to discuss her incredible career, she told me that coming to Smallwood and working directly with children was a perfect match. I then asked Sue about her fondest memory, and she responded about the funny stories of things that kids say and do, and that there have been so many things that have made her laugh over the years. And I'm not surprised because Sue is such a fun-loving person that finds the best in everything and in everyone. She's most proud of watching the light bulbs turn on in students' heads, knowing that through her efforts, she has made a difference. She shared with me that it's the little snippets of hope that are the most important. And further, she loves running into former students who come up to her and can help giving her a big hug. In her retirement, Sue is looking forward to traveling with her husband out and visiting her daughter in Baltimore whenever they want and not being limited by the school calendar. When I asked Sue what she will miss the most, she told me that she will greatly miss all of her friends who are so dear to her heart, because those are the best gifts that you can get at the end of a long and noble career. Sue said that working at Smallwood gets in your heart, and I couldn't agree more, Sue. Know that you are the best gift that we all could get. Thank you for your 23 years of service, and I wish you the best and a very happy and healthy retirement. Congratulations.
I'd like to welcome our Windermere administrators to help honor our Windermere retirees.
So this is the third time that we've had the opportunity to celebrate our teachers, and we want to thank you so much, School Board, for inviting us here. We know Amherst Central is an elite, high-performing school district, and we know we have had that success because of our teachers. So it is an honor to be able to talk about them tonight. Pat has been practicing her craft of teaching for 34 years. I said this the other night, she possesses an innate ability to connect to a child's spirit, fill them up with hope, and fill them with knowledge, and then watch them bloom. Pat is exactly what a parent wants when they send their child to school. So you don't want school to be an institution. You want school to be a home. And I was very lucky, when I moved to Western New York, my son Joseph went to kindergarten with a woman, and her teacher was Pat Winowitz. And in kindergarten, my son Joseph, I have goosebumps, wrote, "A school is a house for children." He also had advice if he were the principal. I didn't know he was going to write a letter to me, but his teacher must have influenced him, because in Pat's classroom, there's always art that reflects the children, not store-bought art, pictures of profiles that they have made of themselves. And here he wrote, "If I were the principal for the day, I would put up more decorations in the school." School is a place for children. It's a place that's scary when you're sending, and an adult is sending their children, giving away some of the freedom. And when you have a teacher like Pat Winowitz accepting them into either a kindergarten classroom, which she taught, a first grade classroom, which she taught, or a second grade classroom, it's with a sigh of relief, and you leave with gratitude. Pat takes that responsibility to heart. She gets to know all of her individual children. She finds out their strengths, and she builds on their strengths. She creates confidence in them, and she helps them tackle all the difficulties of learning to decode, to read, all the difficulties of understanding our number system, but most importantly, gives them the confidence to tackle all the difficulties that they're going to have in life, and persevere, and feel confident, and understand their joys, understand their joys to come, understand how they contribute to the world. Pat Winowitz, you are a gift, and we are going to miss you. You wrote to my child at the end of first grade. You told him to treasure his journal. You wanted him to celebrate his stories, and you told him he was wonderful. So Pat, we hope you can treasure each of the memories that you have for each of all those children who served for 34 years. We want you to remember that you have given us parts of you and will keep you always in our hearts. Thank you very much. Joseph had a classmate, and what was her name?
Joanna.
Joanna Watt. They were in kindergarten and first grade together. Lois, you have been teaching for 22 years, and prior to that, you were a teacher assistant. Your relationship with Windermere goes way back. Your children attended our school. You live in the neighborhood, you walk the streets. For 22 years, you have taught just an enormous amount of children. You have modeled for them integrity, honesty, respect, responsibility, and tolerance. We all know that our children learn more by watching us than the words that we ever say. And you have been the picture-perfect model of all of those traits. You are a quiet person. You are a person who is unassuming. When a parent is gifted into your classroom, when their children come to you, they quickly realize the treasure they have. Your ability to teach the children, your ability to understand difficult concepts. When we learned the new math program, investigations was hard. Lois, I went into your classroom, you were teaching math like none other. Your ability to understand the concepts and then deliver it to the children so that they could understand those difficult concepts. You did it with ease. Yet I never knew your ability in math, because you would never be one to say that. You never waved your flag, but every parent who was in your classroom, they carried that Lois son, your flag. They have been very, very lucky to have you. Our school is a special thing when they learn those character traits, when they're modeled by the teacher that they adore and love. I went through my son Joseph's book, and I found this yearbook. And in this yearbook, there's a wonderful teacher assistant. She looks almost just like you. Her glasses are a little larger, her hair is a little darker and longer. But I was struck by the cover. It said, "Celebrating our cultures, we all smile in the same language." You teach that to the students in your room. You taught them to accept each other. You taught many special needs kids their strengths. You taught all their peers how to appreciate them and vice versa. Lois, we're going to miss you.
Next, I'd like to introduce and have her come up here is Grace Malin. Grace, if you can come forward and stand right next to me. Okay. Grace Malin has been a teacher for 35 years, and she's not only taught regular education classes, but she's also been a special education teacher. And Grace, Grace's handprints and all the things that she's done is forever cemented throughout Windermere. She has not only worked tirelessly in the classroom, I think she's attended almost every nighttime event in some way, shape, or form. She is visible and present in all that we do and on so many committees. She has donated her time late at night to all, working on the many committees that she's been a part of, to name a few. She's a culturally responsive teacher leader. She's a mentor. And she's also brought back and is now the director, or was the past director of our musical theater. And because of her efforts and her passion, she's brought that forward to our district once again. Grace can often be seen through the halls of our school with a camera, and she's taking photos of everything. She's making videos with her kids to promote diversity and kindness and acceptance. And she's truly a treasure within our school, and she celebrates everyone's cultures and differences, and we are forever going to miss her. So thank you, Grace, for everything. Last but not least for Windermere is Joanne Crer. If Joanne can please come forward. Joanne Crer is a social worker, and she has dedicated 21 years of service to our school. Joanne's role as a social worker is really to advocate and to promote the emotional and social well-being of all of our students. She is like everyone's mother and grandmother in this school, and...
And I'm her great-grandmother, too.
Yeah.
I'm not old.
She is someone who not only the students lean on, but the teachers lean on, and I have leaned on as well in some times, and she's been there to support us through the years. Her dedication and devotion to our students and their well-being is just insurmountable how much she's touched the lives of so many students. One thing I wanted to share with you and bring to your attention that just happened recently this year is we were fortunate enough to take on the mentoring program, which was initiative run through a grant through Governor Cuomo's office that his mother, Natila Cuomo, started. And through this grant foundation, she put it out there for schools to take advantage of this great opportunity. Joanne spearheaded that, made some phone calls to Albany, and was able to secure this mentoring program now within our school. And we partnered with University of Buffalo, and we've acquired 15 UB medical students who have come to our school every Wednesday and mentor some of our students. So without her passion, drive, and dedication to our kids, we wouldn't have that program here at Windermere. And because of that, it's going to continue on next year, our partnership with UB and the Met students and how they've helped our students. So that's just one of the many things that Joanne has done and contributed with her time. She will be greatly missed. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Enjoy. You touched our family when Kelly was about two feet shorter.
Yeah.
And I know you've touched a lot of other families even more.
Thank you very much.
We have one board member that we'd like to recognize as well this evening for his dedicated service to our school district and community.
So as many of you know, board members, you know, we're just a volunteer elected body. No salary, no benefits, nothing. You do it because you care and want to give back, and Mr. Bott has definitely done that. Not only has he done one term for 12 years previously as a board member, but he then decided to come back and give us another three, which was at the perfect time when we were going through a superintendent transition, and he was very helpful in choosing the new leader of the district. So in addition, Mr. Bott also sponsors an award at the middle school, the Paul Bott Award, which recognizes a student, an avid reader, who has a shared love of literature. So he continues to sponsor that. We greatly appreciate that. He has been a valued member of this board for his knowledge, history of the school, and many perspectives he has given. So we wish him well, and if he decides to return for another term, we welcome it. As far as I know, you're probably one of the... There's only one other board member I'm aware of that has more tenure than you, and so we congratulate you. So thank you very much.
Definitely bittersweet to present you with this crystal apple. You've served the district with overwhelming support from all sectors of our community, which is not always easy to do, to transcend all four buildings. In most, if not all, of your board elections, I think you were the highest vote getter. Not that anybody's keeping track, but...
My wife and daughter are out there in the driveway. That's what did it.
You take a lot of pride in our district. Your support for our music program has been unwavering, even after your children were done delighting us with their talented performances. You transferred your keen business sense into a leadership style that allowed us to grow and develop in a fiscally responsible manner. Your accomplishments have stood the test of time and continue to serve us well. Thank you for supporting the two-house system at Windermere and leading the charge for a new playground at Windermere and track at the high school. Those are all things that you proudly led and will continue to be big parts of our community. So thank you for the countless hours volunteering for our district and your service to the community.
Thank you, Joe. I have a couple. I won't be too long. Tough act to follow these exceptional young ladies that are being recognized tonight. Thank you again for all your service, and my gosh, excellent, wonderful, dynamic teachers we all know. As I had my last meeting, 30 years ago, I was elected to the board in 1988, and I served until 2001. And then I was off, and I guess our chairman here just mentioned I came back for one more term. So 15 years, and I just want to reflect about the district. We all know this, of course, in different ways, but I think I have a unique perspective because of all my years and all the people I've known and interacted with here in the community or in my business or wherever. But as a parent, a community volunteer, and school board member, I have just mentioned, I've interacted with every level of employee and person associated with Amherst, whether it be superintendent, Mr. Ford, and Mr. O'Neill, Mr. Pennella now, thank God, you're here. And people like Mark Moynihan, the janitor at Windermere all those years, and different people. He would come in dropping my kids off and talk to nighttime janitors at Smallwood or middle school. And of course, all the wonderful teachers, going up through my case, through Windermere and middle school and high school, many of them since retired. But just, you know, one thing, they... Never did I ever hear any agenda or any special interest or a chip on the shoulder. It was every single person, anytime I encountered them, had a love, everything, every decision they made or every initiative they fostered had the kids in mind, their greater growth for their, to be ready for the world as they got out of the Amherst. Just an amazing thing. And I was thinking about it the other day, as I was thinking about what else I'm going to say, but it's remarkable. And I got to say that, and I'm not glossing over, because everyone has just been, in their own way, just wonderful and intuitive and smart, but just above all, we all have a common, we love our kids, we love the kids in the community. And the other thing is that Western New York, we're blessed with... Years ago, I did a My Voice after I left the board, the Buffalo News, and I talked about how unique our education is in Western New York, public and private schools. And we do have many excellent public school systems, private school systems. I went to Penney's High School, and I have friends that went to Newman and St. Joe's and all the other schools, and wonderful schools. But, and they're all great, and I don't want to say anything negative about them, and I won't, but Amherst stands among them, and in my opinion, stands above them for many, many reasons. And I just think we have to be aware of that, and we have to maintain that and nurture that and keep it growing through the years. I know you will. You have a wonderful board here that are all smart people and all love children and love what they're doing. We don't get paid, as Paul says, so we're doing it for the right reasons. We have a wonderful staff, wonderful leadership, our principals, our assistant principals, our people that run our money, Mrs. Lauer there, that take care of us, and people like Mr. Ryan here, Dr. Ryan, that coordinate our instruction, and people like Mike. And you're all great. Debbie, you are our voice in the background, right? Keep everything in order. But I just think it's... We are a lighthouse district. Well, that word was used when I first came on the board, but we truly are a lighthouse district. We inspire others. I mean, look at all the people that aspire to work here, that want to get a job at Amherst or are proud to say their son or daughter graduated from Amherst. It's just something we can't take for granted, and I'm very proud to have been part of it. And Lord knows, we know our institution, our community, Eggersville and Snyder, the school system, the excellence of our school system and the strength of it is really the main foundation for why we live here and why we, you know, you want to be... Talk about money, the housing prices, why people want to live in Snyder, live in Eggersville, it's our school system. And look at our kids and what they've done. I think of my kids and Mary's kids and everyone else's coming up. And I think it's something to be proud of, and it's something we can't take for granted and we have to work at, but I'm very proud to have been part of it. Thank you for everything.
Congratulations to all our retirees. I wish you happiness and good health in retirement. And I'm not really good with goodbyes, so I'm just going to say, "See you later." Congratulations. There's no good way to do this, so we're just going to transition from that to fund balance and reserves. Thank you for being here, and certainly, I understand...
All right, well, thank you. Tonight, we're going to do a very brief review of our activity and our reserves during this year and take a look at our budget fund balance for year-end. Nothing is final, because we still are in mid-June, and we really won't have our final numbers until after our audit closes in August. So our reserve activity. So as planned, we used $100,000 of our EBLR reserve, and that was dictated in last year's budget development. And then we have used $24,000 of our tax serve money this year, and that was from refunds either on Article 7s, which is commercial property, or individual homeowners requesting that their assessments be lowered. So that's the amount that we've refunded so far this year. That is 7.2 million. We used 124,000. We used $124,000, and we are projected to end this year at 6.7. Now, our last projection put us at about 7.4, which is about a $500, $700 swing, but we'll talk about why that is in a little bit. And again, we have $1.24 million appropriated to next year, so we will be exceedingly careful next year to make sure that we're pulling some of that money aside so that we're not spending it, so that we're not further reducing our fund balance in the near future. So in our projections, this is a similar format to what we used before. Our revenues are estimated to come in about $200,000 over budget, and we're hoping to not spend any of our encumbrance or our appropriated reserves. And our expenditures are projected to come in about $600,000 on your budget, but with the two of those, it looks like we will use about $500,000 of our reserves. Using that money will leave us, as I said, at 6.7 million. So a large portion of that is unfortunately our health insurance expenses. I ran some calculations today to double-check some numbers, and as of June 15th, we've overspent our health insurance budget by $524,000. We still have one more payment to come at the end of June, so that will go up a little bit. I'm very grateful and fortunate that we had the $500,000 line in our budget for contingency for health insurance purposes, which was funded with health insurance, because if we hadn't had that in place, we would really have been pushing up against our authorization for our overall budget, and it would have made things even more tighter. So we don't ever want to have to use our fund balance, and it was really good that we had it there and it was in place. In addition to our health insurance costs, we had a couple mechanicals with buildings and grounds that unfortunately needed to be repaired. Our substitute costs were a little higher than we anticipated, and we knew that they were going to go up a little bit, because we had raised our rates this year, but they were a little higher than what we had projected. And we did have a new student move in who does require some additional support from our special education department. So all of those expenses together left us with that $700,000 swing from our last projection to this one. Some of these numbers are still conservative, and we're hoping that they will be slightly better than this, but we do anticipate most likely having to use some of the reserve. With that, in your board packet tonight, there is a resolution to authorize the district to transfer money into a reserve if it's available, if we're above our 4%. I don't know that we're going to need that, but we wanted to make sure that the board at least had the opportunity to look at that tonight, because without that authorization being in place prior to June 30th, if we were over our 4%, we would not be able to transfer any money into reserves after year-end. So that's why that topic is on your agenda for this evening. Any questions?
So what we're looking to the board is, you know, after they have questions about the presentation, looking for them to authorize a reserve and a general amount. This is something we started last year, and again, as Mrs. Bozinski indicated, you have to pass the resolution, and last year, we gave a range and two reserves, and then when the books closed by the end of the summer, we were able to make the transfers within those limits and then report out to the board in the audit report where we ended up in our final reserve plan. So at this point, I think Mrs. Bozinski has a recommendation, and then we can have some discussion or comments if you'd like.
Our recommendation was the EBLR reserve, which is employee benefits, crew liability. The reason that we looked at that is because we've used $100,000 of it this year, and we have $200,000 of it budgeted for next year, so it made sense that if we're using that one, if that's where we would put it back. And then the dollar amount, originally I thought maybe up to $500,000. I wouldn't expect it to be that much, but it was just a range of a not-to-exceed amount that the board would be comfortable with, and it would be anything above and beyond our 4% that we're legally allowed to keep in unappropriated fund balance.
Do you want to have any questions on that?
Thank you. I have a question. So to fill in that reserve, that resolution, are we stating that you're approving the transfer prior to the close of the 1718 fiscal year, within 60 days of the fiscal year I'm going to mount up to, but not to exceed what?
$500,000.
$500,000?
That was the recommendation.
Okay. And that would be for the EBLR reserve?
That's assuming the board is...
Do we need to canvas the board?
Let me canvas the board. Mr. Smith, are you okay with that? Yes. As am I. Thank you. Thank you. That's the superintendent of the board. Thank you very much.
All right, then we will need a motion for new business items, please.
Motion for new business items, F1, A through H, 2, A through E, 3, B, C, D, E, and H.
So for item H, we are not to exceed $500,000, and it's going in the EBLR reserve. All those in favor of new business items, F1, A through H, 2, A through E, and 3, B, C, D, E, and H, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Motion carries, 7-0. I would first like to welcome Dr. Shanahan to our team. She has been recently hired to replace Dr. Schoenfeld, who is leaving us. He didn't want to come last time when we accepted your resignation.
Timing wasn't good.
But congratulations to you and your new journey. Dr. Shanahan, welcome to our team. I'd also like to congratulate Ms. Giordano and Mrs. Eisenhower for your new positions. Welcome.
Thank you.
We look forward to working with you. All right, do we have any follow-up action? Then we will need a motion to convene new executive session. Mr. Bott, would you like to make that as your final?
No, I'll second that. I'll take the motion. Emotionally convene new executive session for matters regarding conference of decisions.
Mr. Bott, all those in favor of convening new executive session, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone, for coming.